For the Commissioners meeting to order Tuesday, October 18th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. Denise, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Glazer.
Here.
Terwilliger.
Here.
Geisler.
Here.
Dorian.
Here.
Noson.
Here.
Chairman Bone.
Here.
Seven.
President.
Commissioner Terwilliger, will you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
Sorry about that, Scott. I didn't do that on purpose.
Heavenly Father, we know your love is infinite and you care about all areas of our life. In this time of economic uncertainty, help us to trust that our security is in you. Keep us mindful that you would provide for our needs. And Lord, we ask that you give leaders the wisdom to guide our state and nation out of current economic challenge. Help us to protect all those who are struggling during this difficult time. We pray for provision of their needs to give them hope. We pray for new opportunities for them, that they will have the resources they need to live with dignity. We also pray that those who have enough will share resources with those who lack basic necessities and do so with humility and love. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for October 4th and October 11th, 2022.
Move to approve the minutes.
Board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will approve the minutes and move on to the acceptance of the bills.
Properly addressed for the weeks of September 26th through September 30th, General Bank claims approved in the amount of $268,849. Total general fund expenditures, $107,646.56. Properly addressed for the weeks of October 3rd through October 7th, General Bank claims approved in the amount of $1,127,752.62. Total general fund expenditures, $58,572.57.
Mr. Chair, I recommend we pay the bills.
Board. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will pay the bills. We are now going to move on to a public hearing regarding the 2023 Administrator Controller Recommended Budget. Public hearing is open. Is there any comments? Yep. Okay, public hearing going once. Public hear- yes.
Is this our time?
Nope, not yet, not yet. Going twice. We are about to close the public hearing for the recommended budget. Gone. We are now going to move on to a special program of the day, and that is an update from Brian Krogman and Deana Mason with Community Mental Health for Central Michigan. And after that will be public comment.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Chair and County Commissioners. My name is Brian Krogman. I'm the Executive Director for Community Mental Health for Central Michigan. Here with me this morning is Deana Mason. Deana is our local Program Director for Midland County. I'm going to give some just general overview of our agency, and then Deana will speak to local efforts in Midland County. Community Mental Health is a six-county governmental authority. We're established by the Michigan Mental Health Code, and we're governed by a board. Board members from the respective county commissions, community representatives, and consumers served. In all, we have a 15-member board. I'd like to thank Commissioner Glazer for his service on our board. The counties we serve include Clare, Gladwin, Isabella, McCosta, Midland, and Osceola Counties. And I'd like to thank you for your strong partnership with our agency and for service to the Midland County Commission or community. You do have a handout, which is our annual report. This is from our fiscal year 2021. My comments will encapsulate some of the information that's in there. It's mostly for your information or your reference along the way. We are accredited by the Joint Commission, which is a national accrediting body for healthcare organizations. We've held that accreditation continually since back to 1996, which really serves to identify our agency as a provision of high-quality and safe services for consumers served and for our staff. We expect our next onsite review next year. CMH provides a wide array of evidence-based services to children with serious emotional disturbance, adults with severe and persistent mental illness, individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and persons with co-occurring substance use disorders. Our vision is communities where all individuals experience fulfilled lives. CMH CM professionals provide individual and group outpatient therapy services, home-based services to support the whole family, psychiatric care and case management services to enable individuals to live in the community, 24-hour community crisis supports, along with a wide variety of other services across the continuum of care. In 2021, CMH served over 10,500 individuals across our six counties, including over 2,700 children. Of the 10,500, approximately 3,000, about 30% received services in Midland County. Across the six counties, CMH funding supports about 2,200 jobs, providing services to some of the most vulnerable citizens in our communities. Of those 2,200 positions, CMH CM directly employs over 420 staff, with about 100 of those staff providing services and supports right here in Midland County. The remainder, about 1,800 part-time and full-time workers are employed by contracted providers. Those working in adult foster care homes are providing staffing to assist individuals to live independently in their own homes and be able to participate in their communities through services such as skill building and supported employment services. CMH budget for this fiscal year that we've just begun, fiscal year 2023, in total is 100, over $142 million. Allocated to Midland County this year is $36 million. With most of that, about 93% is Medicaid. Midland County contributes about $395,000, and we'd like to thank you for your support for our agency. You know, in the FY '23 state budget, the legislature has recognized the difficulty CMH has faced in the competition for direct care workers. And certainly, healthcare across the board is very challenged with securing needed help and professionals or aid-level staff provide services. We do applaud the legislature for continuing funding to retain and recruit these important staff. I'd like to turn it over now to Deana Mason. She's going to go over some local efforts for Midland County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'm going to share some of our significant partnerships at the local level, including both youth, adult, and some more things that maybe you aren't familiar with. Some of our significant co-located integrated service delivery partnerships include working with Midland Kids First on a couple of initiatives, several initiatives actually, but the two I'm going to highlight for you are Recovering Futures, where our Youth Intervention Specialist continues to screen youth who are using substances to provide referrals to behavioral health treatment. We're also continuing to work with Midland Kids First on providing SEEK, which is Safe Environment for Every Kid, Child Maltreatment Prevention Program, which provides behavioral health screening in primary care clinics to youth zero to five years old. When their parents screen positive for anxiety, depression, substance use, or harsh discipline, the parent is referred to our Youth Intervention Specialist, who does the more in-depth screening and provides treatment referrals based on the screening results. We also have a newer initiative where we have a grant-funded and general fund-funded outpatient therapist at the Juvenile Care Center here in Midland County. And that therapist is providing screening and treatment referrals to, for behavioral health and working with us and the courts to identify gaps in treatment service delivery. On the adult side of things, we continue to increase our team-based care, specifically with our co-located integrated service partners, including Mid-Michigan Health, a federally qualified health center, continues to have a physician co-located in our office who sees patients on the primary care side of things and works very closely with our nursing staff to make sure that we're collaborating and providing integrated care for those individuals. Recovery Pathways continues to provide medication-assisted treatment out of our office. And we continue to provide a jail diversion specialist who's co-located in the jail to provide services to inmates. Our jail diversion specialist continues to serve on Drug Court, Mental Health Court, and my hope, those are our Midland specialty treatment courts. And probably the most significant partnership there is Mental Health Court, which seems to be going really well. That court is serving seven offenders currently for court ordered to community-based treatment in lieu of harsher sentencing when their offense occurs as a direct result of their mental health issues. We have utilized our general fund dollars to fund additional slots for Mental Health Court fiscal year '22. That began and into fiscal year '23, we've committed additional dollars to allow additional participants into that specialty court. So there's definitely a need, and we're partnering to try to expand those services. Other significant partnerships include continuing to provide community education specifically to our educators and school staff and other community partners on issues related to mental health. Right now, especially, the need is on compassion fatigue and burnout and healthy coping strategies and mental well-being in difficult times. We continue to work with Midland's Disability Steering Team to work on promoting awareness in the business community of the benefits of employing individuals with disabilities. We are working with law enforcement in our Isabella County office to implement a program called iPads or Tablets for Officers to connect directly with our crisis team when they're responding to an individual who's experiencing a mental health crisis. And we are hoping to roll that out with Midland County law enforcement soon. I think we'll be partnering with the city on that. And we continue to provide community presentations on topics related to Serious Emotional Disturbance waiver and other programs that allow community members to waive the family income to allow individuals to waive into Medicaid and have access to our community mental health services. Currently, we have a need for children's respite and therapeutic foster care providers. So if you or someone you know has training or experience working directly with children with emotional or behavioral concerns and might be interested in learning more about how to become a provider, please have them call our office and ask to speak with the program director. Are we able to open it up for questions?
We are. Do we have any Commissioner questions? Commissioner Noson.
Yeah, I was in Roscommon yesterday for a Northern Michigan Counties Association meeting, and we got a legislative update from Deana Bosworth at MAC. The issue of mental health organization at the state came up, and I think it's Senator Shirkey who is leading that charge, who happens to be term limited, and we've got a lame duck session from now until the end of the year. I just wondered, do you have a point of view on what I believe is the state taking control versus local control? I think it breaks down to that, but I'm wondering, Brian or Deana, if you've got a comment on that.
Sure, yeah, thank you for raising that, because we are very concerned about this issue. And really, it's at the heart of the public mental health system. We believe strongly that the current system is the right system and that part of it is this kind of transparency. Open Meetings Act, for example, and that would be perhaps jeopardized with that plan. There is currently Senator Shirkey on the Senate side, Representative Whiteford, excuse me, on the House of Representatives side. The potential is that they're collaborating together for a new plan. And again, the CMH Association of Michigan, our agency strongly opposes those plans because, like I said, it serves to privatize, in a sense, the mental health services. And the thought is there that, you know, mental health services and serving the vulnerable needs of our individuals in our communities isn't something that has with it a profit motive, for example. We are under a managed care method of financing, which means we get a per-member-per-month payment for every individual who's on Medicaid in our communities. And we, as the public system, we seek out and we do outreach those that have need for services. And profit motive would suggest that there is some alternative to how people who have high-cost needs perhaps are maybe less served as that potential. That's not our approach. And so there's a lot of concern. There was an alert that just came out from our association raising this issue in lame duck session, and we're strongly opposed to the Shirkey plan. We haven't seen anything yet in terms of whether there's a combined plan. There's no legislation. There's nothing written up that we've seen yet. So, you know, I would urge you, if there is something that comes up, to speak with legislators to oppose that. We believe that the CMH system is effective. We know there are many, many challenges in our communities, our nation at large around mental health. We have strong, strong community collaboration, some of the things that Deana has raised here this morning. Work with our community partners for the benefit of our community, and that is a question mark, really, under any kind of new plan.
Yeah, just a couple of follow-up questions or points. Be looking for something fairly soon in your email from MAC. This will be an alert from MAC, too, to all Commissioners in the state to weigh in with their politicians on this. The concern a lot of people have, and you brought up, this is lame duck session. Very few days are going to be involved from now till the end of the year with the legislature, and this could happen very quickly, especially with Shirkey being term limited, and this is his kind of...
It's been stated as something that he's really wanted to see take place.
Right.
His swan song, so to speak. But throughout this year, in attempts to bring this to vote, he's not had the support fully to bring it forward. Through the budget process, all of that, it's gotten to this point. So, you know, whether there's something that's being worked behind closed doors and with Representative Whiteford, we just don't know fully, but it is a concern.
And the other comment I would make is, I agree with you, I don't support it. And I guess the real question is, what problem are they trying to really solve? Because I have all the faith in the world in our local organization, and there may be some issues in other organizations, but it's not pervasive around the entire state. And trying to create a state solution to something that maybe could be handled individually at some of these other CMHs is something that I think needs to be taken into account. So I think in the best case, we could hope for nothing to happen.
I apologize.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Terwilliger.
And I was sort of thinking about that, Scott, but I think that when this all came up, and it was probably, what, nine or 10 months ago, when there was a lot of dialogue regarding this, and that must have been it, just the book gently got shut, and it was just for fiscal year '22. So this, we're talking about '23, so it never, there was never any really, any closure on that. So thanks for bringing that up. I didn't realize that it was still, I did not. Thank you.
It kind of quieted down and then came back around to this, at this moment. There's many, many examples of integration, you know, which is what's in it, what's why. And they may say, well, we need better integration of fiscal and mental health, and we would certainly agree with that. However, as the saying goes, all healthcare is local, and locally-driven collaboration, the CMH system has many examples of how this plays out within our communities.
Yes, Commissioner Noson.
I apologize, but one more comment. Senator Shirkey presented to us a couple of months ago, and he inferred, this is for the benefit of the sheriff, that the Sheriff's Association was supportive of this effort, and I do not believe that is true.
That's not our understanding either.
Right.
Our understanding is the Sheriff's Association is opposed.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, as a good program, good information, we are now going to open it up to public comment. For public comment, we'd like, you have a three-minute time limit. Please state your name and address, and we don't ask questions, but we listen. Yes.
Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Diane Middleton, Vice President of Advocacy for the Midland Business Alliance. And accompanying me this morning is Bill Shute. Bill is one of our lead volunteers with our initiative to address the legacy flooding issues that we've experienced here in the county, in the city. And as you know, the MBA is taking the lead to develop flood reduction and flood resiliency strategies, both short-term and long-term. And we have worked alongside county officials and city officials and a number of other parties to make that happen. And we just wanted to be here this morning. We understand that you are this morning considering an agreement with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, otherwise known as Eagle, for $3 million. And we would urge your consideration and, in fact, approval of that agreement with Eagle. We see that as another strategy to continue our flood reduction and resiliency efforts and to move that football down the field a few more yards, if you will. And I think Bill has some remarks as well.
Thank you, Diane. And Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, delighted to be with you. As Diane said, I'm one of a volunteer helper to her and to Tony Stamos with the Midland Business Alliance Advisory Committee on Infrastructure. And I have to say, Commissioners, how significant and important it is, just as a comment, that you started your session with the Pledge of Allegiance and a prayer, just like the Michigan Legislature does and the United States House of Representatives, the United States Congress when they come into session. So it's important, significant what you did, and just want to make that comment. With respect to this $3 million grant, it's part of our ongoing build-out to reduce the severity and frequency of flooding. Bridgette Grantson is part of this Advisory Committee on Infrastructure, as is Chairman Bone. And this $3 million grant coming from the state will be used in a collaborative fashion with the County of Midland and the Midland Business Alliance for engineering services and other related uses. So it's important, it's on this path of reducing the severity and frequency of flooding, and just wanted to say thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you. Is there any other public comment on anything that's not on the agenda?
Good morning. I'm Renita from Midland County. After hearing that the Qualified Voter FOIA request had been denied, I decided to FOIA the Secretary of State's Office to request the Board of Elections and requested a Qualified Voter File for the seven to eight million, however many they have in their file, of registered voters, as well as all of the voting history that they have in their files, which I think go back to about 2010. Within 24 hours, I received an approval for my request for that data. Total cost is $53.37. It was denied in part and granted in part because, under Michigan election law, the following is exempt from disclosure, and then the fields are listed. And I do have a copy of that approval and denial. But under the exemptions, there are certain fields that can be eliminated from the data, but all other data must be released. Where a responsive record contains both exempt and non-exempt material, the department will retract such material. So I guess the Commissioner was correct when he said that the Secretary of State's Office will throw data at you all day, because I didn't have a problem. So I ask again, why did Midland County not release this data that was requested through a FOIA, as all of you on this board also voted unanimously to deny that FOIA information request? Perhaps the law should be interpreted correctly for the Freedom of Information Act. On another topic, several of us attended the public accuracy test of the Dominion Machines last week. I asked about the Qualified Voter File data and why it was denied when the PII could be removed. I was told that it would require the file to be opened and have certain fields removed. He went on to explain that the file has now been modified, so it's no longer the original file. Then I was asked if I would really want a file that has been tampered with. Based on that logic, if you call it that, I guess one would never believe a report or a data export you're given unless it captures every field in the database, since it sounded more like a smokescreen to hide the true reason for the denial. Further, six of us in our 60s and 70s were told that we aren't even capable of doing an accurate hand count. He said not one of us could even count that test deck of 50 ballots correctly. Are we the people too ignorant to handle the process of counting our own votes, like was done for decades? Perhaps the job is to defend the need for the machines rather the integrity of our votes. We were again told that he has the ability to evaluate the nature and intent of the requestor for information in a FOIA request. The law does not allow organizations to die.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment today? No public comment? We will move on to Standing Committee Report Number One, then, please, Denise.
Dated October 14th, 2022, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, our Administration and Operations Committee and the Finance Committee have reviewed and recommend the approval of the USGS Flood Inundation Mapping Grant Agreement with the United States Department of the Interior. The term of this agreement is from October 1st, 2022, through September 30th, 2024. This agreement allows the county to receive assistance from the federal government to prepare a flood mapping tool for the Titibowasee River, Surgin Creek, and Snake Creek. The total cost to produce this tool is $85,000, of which $21,000 will be covered by USGS. The remaining $64,000 will be paid by the county and reimbursed by the Midland Business Alliance. Furthermore, the full $85,000 will qualify toward the $430,500 matching requirement for the USGS Comprehensive Water Resource Plant Agreement. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson; Scott Noson; Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee; Scott Noson, Chairperson; Jeanette M. Snyder; James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A&amp;O Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 86-8-21.
And Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee also recommends adoption of Agenda Item 86-8-21.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Denise, call roll, please.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Terwilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Committee Report Number Two, please.
Dated October 14th, 2022, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, our Administration and Operations Committee and the Finance Committee have reviewed the grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy in the amount of $3 million to prepare a water management plan related to flooding. The term of this agreement is from October 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2025. We recommend approval of the agreement and that the Administrator Controller be authorized to make any necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson; Scott Noson; Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee; Scott Noson, Chairperson; Jeanette M. Snyder; James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A&amp;O Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 97-9-22.
And Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee also recommends adoption of Agenda Item 97-9-22. Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee also recommends adoption of Agenda Item 97-9-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Denise Carroll, please.
Commissioners Glazer?
Yes.
Terwilliger?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Dorian?
Yes.
Knowles?
Yes.
Snyder? Yes. Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Committee Report Number Three, please.
Dated October 14th, 2022, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the attached revisions to County Policy 301.4 regarding the Midland County Employees Fund, as submitted by the Midland County Treasurer. Respectfully submitted, Scott Knowles and Chairperson; Jeanette M. Snyder; James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Knowles.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 100-10-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Denise Carroll, please.
Commissioners Terwilliger?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Dorian?
Yes.
Knowles?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Committee Report Number Four, please.
Dated October 14th, 2022, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the Michigan Department of Treasury Form titled "Statement Showing Taxable Valuation and Mills Apportioned by the County Board of Commissioners," also known as the Annual Apportionment Report. This form fulfills the statutory requirement and reports the allowable millage to be levied for the current year. These millages are certified to the state via electronic submission by the Equalization Bureau. However, this report is kept on file to meet the statutory requirement of MCL 211.37. Respectfully submitted, Scott Knowles and Chairperson; Jeanette M. Snyder; James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Knowles.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 101-10-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Denise Carroll, please.
Commissioners Geisler?
Yes.
Dorian?
Yes.
Knowles?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Terwilliger?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Committee Report Number Five, please.
Dated October 14th, 2022, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of a 3% wage increase for the county elected officials as follows: Elected official county clerk, $95,394; Drain Commissioner, $92,144; Prosecuting Attorney, $145,028; Registered deeds, $85,982; Sheriff, $121,082; Treasurer, $96,070. The 2023 Administrator Controller's recommended budget includes these salary figures. Respectfully submitted, Scott Knowles and Chairperson; Jeanette M. Snyder; James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Knowles.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 103-10-22.
Do we have any public comment on this? Commissioner, discussion? I'd just like to say this does not, just so everybody knows, does not include the Commissioners, so just going on record for saying that. So, Denise Carroll, please.
Commissioners Dorian?
Yes.
Knowles?
I'm sorry. It's your turn, Bob. Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Terwilliger?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Committee Report Number Six, please.
Dated October 14th, 2022, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the increases in wages for seasonal workers employed by both the Parks and Recreation and Mosquito Control Departments as follows: First year, current rate $14.10 an hour; proposed rate $14.33 an hour. Second year, $14.60 an hour; proposed rate $14.83 an hour. Third year, $15.35 an hour; proposed rate $15.58 per hour. The 2023 Administrator Controller's recommended budget includes these salary figures. Respectfully submitted, Scott Knowles and Chairperson; Jeanette M. Snyder; James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Knowles.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 104-10-22.
Do we have any public comment on this? Commissioner, discussion? Denise Carroll, please.
Commissioners Knowles?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Terwilliger?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Dorian?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Committee Report Number Seven, please.
Dated October 14th, 2022, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of a 3% wage increase to the wage scale in 2023 for non-union employees. We further recommend an annual lump sum bonus of $500 in 2023 for non-union employees who currently exceed the scale. The 2023 Administrator Controller's recommended budget includes these figures. Respectfully submitted, Scott Knowles and Chairperson; Jeanette M. Snyder; James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Knowles.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 105-10-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Denise Carroll, please.
Commissioners Snyder?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Terwilliger?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Dorian?
Yes.
Knowles?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Committee Report Number Eight, please.
Dated October 14th, 2022, properly addressed, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of a 3% wage increase for the members of the Midland County Board of Commissioners for the 2023-2024 legislative term as follows: Commissioner's salary, 3% in 2023, $9,476; 3% in 2024, $9,760. Standing Committee Chair, 3% in 2023, $10,035; 3% 2024, $10,336. Board Chair, 3% 2023, $10,595; 3% 2024, $10,915. The 2023 Administrator Controller's recommended budget includes these salary figures. Respectfully submitted, Scott Knowles and Chairperson; Jeanette M. Snyder; James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Knowles.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 106-10-22.
Is there any public comment on this? Commissioner, discussion? Well, I feel I've got to let the beast out of the room. I was gone last week, and I didn't see that on when I brought up the 3%. So, I definitely made a mistake. So, I'm human. I apologize, and I missed it being gone on vacation last week. So, I'm a little embarrassed at this point by bringing that point up earlier, but Denise Carroll, please.
Commissioners Glazer?
Yes.
Terwilliger?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Dorian?
No.
Knowles?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Six yays, one nay. Motion carries.
Committee Report Number Nine, please.
Dated October 14th, 2022, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee and the Human Services Committee, have reviewed the request to increase the FTE of the community health nurse who works exclusively in immunizations from a .7 FTE to a .9 FTE. We recommend approval of the request and authorize the Administrator Controller to make any necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, Scott Knowles and Chairperson; James Geisler, Finance Committee; Eric Dorian, Chairperson; Gay Terwilliger; Steve Geisler, Human Services Committee.
Commissioner Knowles.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 102-10-22.
Commissioner Dorian?
The Human Services Committee also recommends adoption of Agenda Item 102-10-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Denise Carroll, please.
Commissioners Terwilliger?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Dorian?
Yes.
Knowles?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Glazer?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Six yays, one nay. Motion carries.
That is it for... We have no RPCs. We have no old business. I would take a motion to bring up two items of new business.
So moved.
Support. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed the same? Will you read the first item of new business, please, Denise?
Dated October 14th, 2022, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, I recommend approval of the attached resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans in Midland County and across the nation. Respectfully submitted, Scott Knowles, District Number Seven, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Knowles.
Mr. Chair, I recommend adoption of Agenda Item 107-10-22.
Do we have any public comment on this? Administrator Controller.
Yes, good morning. Thanks for taking this resolution up. The National Association of Counties has been encouraging counties... They are partnering with the National Veterans Association to participate in Operation Green Light for veterans by lighting their buildings with green during the week of November 7th through the 13th to highlight Veterans Day. Part of this is really to recognize the local county veteran service officers who help veterans with the transition when they come back to their communities and they are leaving active duty service. This is an example. I had Kevin play with this. I put a picture... Jessica put a picture up there. I had Kevin see what he could do. That's what our courthouse will look like. We're actually, as you saw in the resolution, we want to do this November 1st through the 13th. There's nothing that says we can't do it longer than what NACO is recommending. And I'll be putting a press release together so that it can get into the newspaper. I've also reached out because I think it would be really cool for the whole Great Lakes Bay region to get some press doing this, so I've reached out to the other counties in the Great Lakes Bay region to see if they're interested in participating at all, and I've gotten a little help from the Alliance on that. And that includes Arnet, Gladwin, Clare, Bay, Saginaw, Grasha, and Isabella. And I have not heard back yet, but I just sent that out yesterday. So, I think it would be great. There are some other people, other businesses here in the community that I'm going to tap. If you haven't seen, the H actually has some incredible lighting behind their building, and I'm going to talk with Derek Rimaldi and see if he can make it green during that week, and maybe the tridge can be green for that week, too. And maybe we can get Dow Diamond to light their scoreboard on green for that timeframe. So, if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay. Commissioner Twiliger.
Yeah. I just want to thank Bridgette for taking the initiative to not just make this an effort here, but more of a regional effort. That's really powerful to have it be that significant of an effort, and I really hope that we make a larger presence.
Okay. And I did know you made a motion on that, but I do need somebody to support that. Okay, thank you. Did you have a question? Commissioner Knowles?
Well, it was more a comment. I just want to point out, this also applies to individual homes, too, and so it encourages folks to put up at least one light in a prominent area, you know, in your living room or whatever. That could be seen from the outside. I plan on doing that and would encourage others, too, as well.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed the same? Okay, new business number one is approved. Denise, could you move to new business number two, please?
Dated October 14th, 2022, properly addressed, dear ladies and gentlemen, it is with great pleasure to write this letter recommending approval of the following proclamations to the Midland County Board of Commissioners on behalf of the Midland Exchange Club and Carl and Esther Gerstacker Foundation. The proclamations are for the 2022 Law Enforcement Officer as well as the 2022 Firefighter of the Year. This year's recipients are Deputy Colton D. Eddy from the Sheriff's Office and firefighter Jimmy Bailey of the Jerome Township Fire Department. These individuals have shown what it means to go above and beyond the call of duty in their respective fields. Sincerely, Scott Knowles and Midland County Board of Commissioners, District Number Seven.
Commissioner Knowles.
Mr. Chair, I recommend adoption of Agenda Item 108-10-22.
Can I get support?
Support.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Any Commissioner, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed the same? That will close out our new business for the day. We are now going to move on to Commissioner comments, and we are going to start with Commissioner Knowles today.
Just one piece of information that I got yesterday regarding Michigan Works. We had an injunctive hearing regarding, you know, the issue at Saginaw County in terms of fiduciary. We ended up losing on all counts there, primarily because our bylaws say that we cannot sue or be sued, and "we" means within county, you know. So, that was in there, and unfortunately, that was kind of a driving force. We asked whether the judge... The judge was from Tuscola County, since all five commissioners... All five judges from Saginaw recused themselves, rightfully so. So, now I lost my train of thought. Well, we asked for mediation. The judge said she's not going to authorize that, but, you know, if we can do that on our own, fine. So, on Monday, the 28th, we'll have a joint board meeting, and we'll be discussing options moving forward. I just wanted you all to know that that's the status of that lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Snyder?
So, I think the proclamation is great about the Sheriff's Department and our, of course, Deputy Colton and the Fire Department. You know, the City of Midland is in the county, too, and so I'm grateful for those individuals. I know the City of Midland recognizes them, but they're in the county, too, and I just think that they... I think that it's going to be an exciting night tonight, and I'm looking forward to it. And the resolution supporting Operation Green Light, I think, is phenomenal, and I appreciated the presentation today as well. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Glazer?
Yes, serving on the Mental Health Board. They do a tremendous job, certainly for Midland County, but I think for all of the counties and communities in the district. And it was nice to receive the report from Brian, our new director.
Okay, agreed. Commissioner Twiliger?
Yes, it was a pleasure to meet Brian, the new director. I did appreciate the presentation from Community Mental Health, and I also appreciated understanding that the issue regarding their funding is not a dead issue, and it is very much active. Also, thanks for the update about Michigan Works. We appreciate Commissioner Knowles and that you continue to update us on that. Green Light Initiative is fantastic, and yes, I'm looking forward to the officer and firefighter event tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Geisler?
I will be going to Michigan Works with Scott. I have a real problem with what's come down. I just don't like what was happening, and I don't think we've been able to change anything. I think that's another attempt to at least exit the system, if it's possible.
Thank you. Mr. Dorian?
Well, obviously, my being here today means that my schedule had changed. As you know, I was supposed to have heart procedure yesterday. That was canceled late Wednesday, much to my objection, and has been rescheduled for November the 18th. So, I have to take it easy till then.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Well, staying on the mental health side of things, or health side of things, a couple of things. One, Midland Kids First, which is tied with what we heard today, is a great program. We are now looking for a new CEO, so if anybody knows of a CEO that's available, we've talked to a few people, but we're still looking. It's probably roughly a 20-hour-a-week job, so if anybody knows of somebody, please let me know. And then I also wanted to touch on the health side of a new company out here in Midland County that not many people know of right now, but it's called Gateway Healthcare, and it's a really, really exciting program. It serves the Ellis community, so the people from twenty-nine to sixty-five thousand dollar range. And what you can do with Gateway is it's right there on Dartmouth and Saginaw, but for somebody that has no insurance, you can go in there and you pay forty dollars for a visit. That's all it is, is forty dollars, and it's called Gateway because if you pay that forty dollars and you have to go to the hospital for testing, or if you see something serious and you have to be in the hospital for a couple of weeks, the only penny you're going to pay is forty dollars. Everything else is covered. So that's why we call it Gateway, it's kind of the gateway to the hospital, we know how to, or they know how to navigate through the, you know, process to get hospital care. So it's really, really exciting for people that it's going to be life-changing if they have medical bills for the rest of their life. I said we a couple times because I do sit on the board, but it's probably one of the most exciting programs I've seen in a long time, so we're really excited about it, proud to be part of it. They had an open house two Fridays ago, I think it was, it was neat, they had great, just great attendance, and TV Five was there, and it's groundbreaking, there's not another program like it in Michigan, so it's pretty neat. Commissioner Twilliger?
I think that's fascinating, Commissioner Bone, and I think that would be great to have them come and do a presentation so we can better understand that.
I've already talked to them about that, and it will be happening. Commissioner Knowson?
I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but who pays?
Yeah, that's what I want to know.
Who pays?
They're going out to foundations, they're looking foundations for funding, there's private individuals that are paying for it, so it's a, it's a long, long process, but they're talking with foundations for funding. There, we do have money right now to cover the appointments, so there is money in the bank account that covers it. This was the brainchild of Messiah Lutheran, so, and they have a bunch of other good things out there in the community, so it's working well, and yeah, I can give you a bunch more details, but just wanted to bring that up, and we're going to move on to meeting schedules and start with Commissioner Knowson.
Yes, we already mentioned the Michigan Works next Monday, and then the only other thing I have is I believe on the first, we have A and O and Finance, usual time, usual place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Snyder?
We're going over meeting schedule?
Yes.
I need a point of clarification, did we do the, Denise, did we do the bank claims?
Yes.
Okay. I must have mentally stepped out, my apologies.
You said yes.
Okay, so we have the Law Enforcement Firefighter of the Year tonight, I'm happy to attend that with everybody. And then on the twentieth, I am going to attend probably for most of the day, the Symposium of the Four Lakes Task Force that is at the Center for the Arts. And then I do have the City of Coleman on the twenty-fifth, I need to get up there and see them. Road Commission on the twenty-seventh at nine AM, and that is all for me, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Glazer?
Yes, sir. Tomorrow evening, Homer Township at seven o'clock, State Health Network Substance Use Disorder Oversight Policy Board in Lansing will be at four o'clock. Thursday, I do plan to attend the Symposium, Four Lakes Task Force Symposium on the dams and, you know, all associated with that, at the Center for the Arts. Let's see. Michigan Community Action will be on the twenty-seventh, Thursday, and that will be all.
Thank you. Commissioner Twilliger?
Yes, I plan to attend the Officer and Firefighter Award Event tonight. Also, on October twentieth, I have Recovery Court, which is in person, and I will be attending the Four Lakes Task Force Symposium Event in part on October twentieth and October twenty-sixth. We have our quarterly Community Corrections Advisory Board Meeting, that Marissa is the manager and director of that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Geisler?
A and O will be meeting on Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, at two thirty PM in this room, and I would like to mention that the public is invited to A and O, or Finance, or Human Services. We don't get very many people that take advantage of that, but they should be. We just went through some discussion with the Midland Daily News and the League of Women Voters, and they wanted to know, do the commissioners advocate conversation? And yes, we do, but the general public, on the most part, does not take advantage of it, and I think that should. I've tried to encourage it, and we don't care what group you belong to, if you're a Republican, or a Democrat, or an Independent. If you're, if you're a citizen of Midland County, you are welcome at our meetings, and we encourage you to come. Thank you.
Commissioner Dorian?
Yes, Chairman, I also plan on attending the Fort Lake, the Four Lakes Task Force Symposium at Center for the Arts on Thursday. Human Services is scheduled to meet Monday, the twenty-fourth, at two o'clock in the first